Alright, so I think we're gonna call the meeting to order for the Committee of the Whole for Monday, November 6th, so welcome everyone. We'll begin by asking if there are any items to add to the agenda. Okay, so hearing Nan Kref ask for a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Council Sampson. Can I have a second here, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Council Digdon. Any further discussion on the agenda? Okay.
Sorry, I'm gonna get right on hitting the button this time around. So alright, so if there's no further discussion on the agenda, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, that motion is carried. Okay, the next item is the review of the minutes from October 10th, 2023, Committee of the Whole. Any items to add or remove from those minutes? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve. I'll move the approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Council Sampson. Could I have a second here?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. The motion's been made to approve the minutes of October 10th, 2023. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So the next item on the agenda is the review of just the warden's reports, so that's the list that I've put together of some of the activities undertaken over the last month since our last Committee of the Whole meeting. This is really just for information purposes, but would invite any questions or comments. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. The CAO for the Administration Operations Report. So Troy, I'm not sure if you wanted to speak to that.
Thank you, Warden. The report is there for your review and all departments are represented. If you have any questions. What we're trying to do is, seeing that this is a new report for us, is we're highlighting the changes from month to month on the report to show any updates, anything that's ongoing, and that anything that was completed between last month and this month will not appear in the next one going forward. If you've already seen it highlighted as completed, it's gonna go away, alright? Unlike our to-do list, things stay on there forever so that we always have that running order, but this one, we're gonna try and keep it to the things that are currently a work in progress so that you guys are informed of everything we have on the go.
Thank you, Troy. Really appreciate the summary, certainly. I did wanna just note that the, for the September activity on the Comfort Center MOU meetings, so this is a formalization of comfort centers in specific locations throughout the county. I believe we have a little over 20 of them, about 20-ish?
Close to that, yeah.
Okay, great. So those are, I guess, kinda formalizing the agreement.
There they are.
Okay. That's great, that's a great step forward. And really happy to note the volunteer fire department insurance renewal discussion on that part of the report as well, so. Any questions on the admin report? No comments, questions? Okay, great, cruising right along. Alright, so the next item on the agenda is an update on the former West Richmond Education Building, and again, I'm gonna hand that over to you, Troy.
Thank you, Warden. It's just to let everyone know, we're about 12 pages in on a RFP that we're putting together for the Walter Fugier West Richmond School to, for council to entertain proposals for that facility. Once we have it ready, I'd like to have it to you guys in December to look at, release in January, so that we can start entertaining proposals through the winter. So hopefully, we have a successful developer to come along and they'll be ready to go in the spring. But you guys will get a chance to see the RFP first to make sure it aligns to the initiatives of the council and so that we can move forward with repurposing that facility.
Thank you, Troy. I did want, that's great news that we're making some moves on that building. I did wanna ask, I, you know, I'm looking at you, Council Melanie Sampson, because you had forwarded some information about a housing project in, I think it was Yarmouth area. I don't know if you wanted to kinda speak to that in the context of this, of the old school.
Well, just that article that I had sent to you just had a very interesting idea. In that case, I think the municipality actually did take over the project and convert an old school or old schools into some affordable housing, and I certainly wouldn't propose that as a municipality that we proceed in that direction, but that, that's certainly been a use that they're looking to do with those facilities, so I think that's very much in line with the idea that we've had for so long about what we'd like to see happen there. So I'm very encouraged by your work on the project, and thank you for that and look forward to seeing that proposal when you're, when you're ready.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other comments or questions on the former West Richmond Education Building? Councilor Digdon.
Yeah, button's not working. Yeah, I guess the only, you know, more of a statement, I guess, and we brought it up at our Recreation Committee meeting, you know, it's one of those things that the island in general is always looking for spots for, you know, indoor racquetball or indoor basketball or something else, so it was just a thought that, you know, if the building was pretty much completely stripped, it might be, it might be able to be used as a, or converted into something for indoor recreation sports. Cause we're always looking, you know, we're going through the schools and we're going through the halls and we're going through everywhere else, but it would be nice to have one multi-use facility, and the size of the, that facility might be, might be a perfect spot.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Digdon. Certainly something that we can take into consideration, for sure, so. Any other comments on the former West Richmond Building? Okay, so hearing none, I'm just gonna move us along on the agenda then, so thank you, Troy. And this next item is probably the, one of the best parts of the agenda tonight, it's the introduction of new staff to council, so I'll hand it back over to you, Troy.
Thank you, Warden. I'm gonna ask Danielle and Clayton to come up to the presenter chairs there.
I was gonna like putting you right in the center.
Perfectly safe.
Might as well get comfortable now, right? I know, it gives us a great pleasure and we were quite happy when council agreed in the budget this year to allow a term position to bring Danielle in, to help us with our community engagement and alignment with your strategic plan. Again, there's no sense having one of those documents if you're not gonna turn it into action, and with your budget decision this year, you gave us that ability to hire this person who's gonna be working under Shannon and trying to really move those strategic initiatives of the strategic plan forward and increase our engagement and interaction with the community groups within Richmond County. So that's gonna be Danielle, you're gonna probably see her again in December or January. Shannon and Danielle are working on how this rollout is going to look, you're probably already seeing some emails, if not you will in the near future, of what our engagement sessions are gonna look like in the new year. Before I move on to Clayton, do you need to add anything to that, Shannon, or are you good with that? That's good for tonight? Awesome, thank you. And Clayton McMillan has joined us from St. Peters, he is our technology, or, um, technology specialist, thank you, so I get the term right. Clayton is already looking at the where are we stage with our servers, our systems. We have taken, it was so funny, we had the budget set last April or May with you guys on capital and the software, and he never saw those documents, and it's within hundreds of dollars that he came up with, with a plan that fits right within there. Now, the one thing we're not gonna be able to do this year is end user improvements, because there's too much that needs to be done in the server room with our, and with security measures, so endpoint user upgrades will probably have to be pushed off to 24, 25, but we gotta fix the backbone first before we do that and get the 365 transition going. So Clayton is working on the plan, Jason sat with us the other day to help us make sure we have things assigned to the right parts of the budget, and he's gonna be working on purchase orders soon to get that ready, so we're hitting the ground running in December.
Thanks, Troy. Well, welcome to the two of you, we're very excited to have you onboard, probably too much so. Anyways, but I don't know if, is there anything you guys wanted to say, or, I don't want not to put you on the spot. Please, just fire that microphone on the floor, you'll be fine. Alright, so councilors, did you have any questions for Troy or the new staff, or anything you wanted to add?
Want to come aboard?
Yeah.
When it comes to IT stuff, Clayton, technology, if you need some help?
Do not help.
Sean is struggling with pressing the button on his microphone even this evening.
Deputy Warden.
There you go, yeah.
Yeah, just wanna welcome aboard yous and look forward to working with yous.
Awesome. Alright, well, thank you so much. Yeah, we may need, we may need some courses on button pressing development here, but that's okay. We'll figure that out, we'll get used to it. Welcome to the both of you, and it's great to have you onboard. Okay. Alright, thanks folks, and thank you, Troy. So the next item on the agenda are community acknowledgements, and I'm just gonna pop open my summary here, because we have a few to take care of this evening. And the first, as always, is our Volunteer of the Month, so this year, right, this year, this month, excuse me, for the month of October, our Volunteer of the Month was Kenneth LeBlanc from River Bouchois. Kenneth is a volunteer with a heart of gold, is the first line in the nomination form. He's kind and generous and an unassuming man with a great demeanor, he can often be seen with a permanent smile on his face. Kenneth plays a vital role in the community, providing the repairs at the seniors' club as well as providing regular maintenance for the visitation parlor, including mowing and maintenance of the building when the regular caretaker is away. He also gives his time to provide routine reviews of the community gym equipment, ensuring it's in a safe condition for all to use, as well as to the weekly cafe luncheon and men's breakfast. Kenneth supports the Mariners fundraisers and can often be found sharing his barbecue skills at events in the community, he's always ready to assist with any project as, at a moment's notice. Kenneth is a fisher with a generous giving heart who during fishing season shares his catch with others. Members of Kenneth's community describe him as someone who is, who is a behind-the-scenes type of guy, who is very deserving of this recognition, he's a pillar in his community, and, and his community is very grateful the countless hours he gives of his time and efforts to all events, activities, and occasions. So please join us, folks at home and here, in recognizing Kenneth for his hard work, dedication, and commitment to his community. We do thank you for all you do for Richmond County, and I can attest to the fact that Kenneth has one of the best views in River Bouchois, because I dropped off his volunteer package on the weekend, and, and it's a beautiful spot that he lives in, so, one of the, one of the hidden gems in our community, so. Alright, so, any questions on that or comments? Okay, so the next community acknowledgement that I wanted to bring to the table is that the Straight Area Chamber of Commerce is having their Fall Dinner and Awards Gala coming up on November 15th, and they have a whole suite of award recipients, I think their Excellence in Business Award winner this year is the Malibu Farmers Market, which has been in operation for quite some time. And most exciting to me, though, was to see the Rising Star New Business of the Year Award being given to the Farmer's Pantry in St. Peters, so just wanted to say congratulations to the pantry, it's a family affair, that business, and, and they're just gonna be turning three years old, I think later this month, so it feels like they've been part of our community already forever, so a big congrats, congrats to the pantry. And then, I also wanted to see if the Deputy Warden would like to acknowledge a special member of the gallery that we have here this evening, student who is here visiting and working on a political science project. So over to you, Deputy Warden, you can press your button.
Yeah, so I'd like to, thanks for putting me on the spot, Madam Warden, but like to acknowledge a young St. FX student here with us tonight, working on a political science project. Hopefully, he doesn't sit in the question period chair and ask too many questions of the Deputy Warden, but welcome Connor Sampson, and, yep, and congratulations on your, your stay at St. FX, and, yeah, hopefully, everything goes good with your political science project.
Thanks for having me, guys. Pleasure to be here.
Oh my goodness, I know, I don't think I was coming to municipal council readings on my reading breaks from St. FX, but I admire your dedication. Alright, are there any other community acknowledgements that folks wanted to bring forward this evening?
Yeah, for me, Madam Warden, and all of council, and all of Richmond County, I'd like to acknowledge Danielle LeBlanc from Peregrine Grove. The Straight Richmond Power of Care Society just had their EGM on October 20th and presented Danielle with a heartfelt token for everything he does for that society. Danielle has Wings and Music Night at Allen Nest here on Thursday evenings, and there's a donation jar, donation box at the door, more or less, and it's just by donation, so every Thursday, everybody in the community goes out to Allen Nest and listens to Danielle and many musicians that join them on stage. And just recently, Danielle did present the Straight Power of Care Society with $10,126.73. So, yeah, hats off to Danielle and all the musicians that join them on Thursday evenings, and to the staff, Joelle Sampson and the staff at Allen Nest that work together to put these great events on, so hats off to Danielle. He's, he's been named one of our Volunteers of the Month in the past, but I mean, when I see this, this, this number of, you know, for donation, that's, that's quite astounding, so hats off to him and congratulations to everybody involved.
That's, that's an amazing accomplishment, thank you, Deputy Warden. I think, speaking of LeBlancs, we would be remiss in not also congratulating on behalf of Richmond County Council, the Honorable Arthur LeBlanc and the Honorable Patsy LeBlanc on their honorary degrees from CBU this past weekend, which was bestowed to them at a pretty impressive event at La Picasa on Saturday. For those who were there, you know, I think it was definitely a heartfelt ceremony and fantastic to see such a strong CBU presence right here in our own backyard, so congratulations to them both. The Deputy Warden and I attended that ceremony. And I wanted to also mention, of course, with Remembrance Day around the corner, you know, that, you know, I guess a special shout-out to our Legion communities, I know they're busy planning for Senatath and Remembrance Day related events, certainly hope to see lots of folks out there, and really thank you to the volunteers who are putting that together, and most of all, thank you to the veterans who, who have secured our freedoms, so. Any other comments on that? Deputy Warden?
Yeah, Madam Warden, I'll follow up on, on the Legion situation and all the great volunteers, when you look at the front of our building here, in front of our municipal office, and Chris, thank you for working with, with the local Legion here, they had so much demand for these veteran banners that they had to put some extra framing up in front of our building here, but hats off to all of them. If, if, you know, I encourage everybody to walk the sidewalk and look at those beautiful banners remembering and honoring the people that have served our country and are still serving our country, so. So hats off to the, to the veterans and their families, and hats off to the volunteers that have put these banners up, and just great work, and it's not only the, the local Legion, I think there's banners in St. Peters, there's banners in Lewesdale, there's banners everywhere around this county, and it's just a great, great event and, and great to see. So I encourage everybody that has opportunity to walk by and, and take in these banners to, to do so, and I just congratulate and acknowledge and thank everybody for, for what they're doing and being involved.
Thanks, Deputy Warden, they are beautiful, they're stunning banners this year, and kinda gives you a little history lesson on, you know, who's who in, in our community and who has contributed in that way, so. Alright, any other community acknowledgements? Okay, so hearing none, I'm gonna move us on to the next item on the agenda, which is correspondence, and we have a couple of pieces that are, require some action on our part. The first is a grant application from the Calvin Presbyterian Church for the Type 1 Infrastructure Grant Funds in the amount of $2,147.81. So the CFO has provided a, a bit of a summary, and it says include in the grant application in the meeting package, you know, it looks like the, the, sorry, the church has, has obtained quotes, is what I'm trying to say, from, from source to kind of back up the amounts that they're requesting, and I'm just, I guess, would open for comments, I don't know, Council Brent Sampson, these are, I think, are folks in your district, if you wanted to make any, open with any comments regarding this one?
No, that's okay for now, you can come back around to me if you want, I'll see what everybody else.
Okay, so I think we also have a sense of where, where at with the, in terms of our grant distribution, it has been a busy year, so are folks, are folks interested in supporting the grant application, or would you have a recommendation for an adjustment? Councilor Digdon, you look like you're...
There we go, yeah, Madam Warden, I was just going over some of our, excuse me, meetings in the past, I don't know if it falls under the same, same scenario, but I remember back last year, the St. Joseph's Parish was looking for a grant as well, and I just wonder, I know we had, there was concerns about not supporting a church, I just wonder if we're under the same, I, we supported them out of our district fund, however, we, we didn't wanna support them through our...
Yeah, Councilor Digdon, I recall that conversation as well. I, I guess maybe what I would do, though, is maybe ask Troy or through you, Troy, to Jason, there's a charity return, like, so this, this organization is, like, is, it's a registered charity, it looks to me, so, it, but is it still an operating church? I'm, like, I'm ignorant of this story, but I, can someone provide some clarity?
Pass through to either the counselor or the CFO.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'd be similar to the application that we had received from St. Joseph's Parish, a number, number, I think it was last year. It's the Calvin Presbyterian Church, and it looks like, if you look at their information returned, there's like a Canada branch, so I think it would be similar to basically the, like, the, we call it like the diocese of Aniganish, where churches fall underneath the diocese, this would be part of a Canadian Presbyterian Church group, different business numbers, but still a, you know, non-for-profit group that's working in the local community, I guess.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Yes, go ahead, Council.
Yeah, so, and I mean, I can understand that, in light of that, I'd be, I'd be more than willing to put $1,000 from my district fund towards this project, if council wants to put any more, great, and if not, I can, I can do that at least.
Okay, so Councilor Sampson is suggesting $1,000 from the District 5 funding? Yeah, so, and I guess the other point is that the regional funds, I believe, were down, the amount remaining is close to the $10,000 mark, I believe?
Eighty-one ninety-five.
Eighty-one ninety-five, right. So would open up for discussion if councilors feel that they would like to contribute from the regional fund as well? Or not? Councilor Sampson?
Just, I would not be interested in supporting from the general fund, I wasn't party to the conversation about the St. Joseph's Parish, just cause I had recused myself from that conversation, but barring that, if you look at their cash balances and investment balances, they do have some cash there, some accessible money that they could use towards the project, so I wouldn't be inclined to support it.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Sampson. So, any other comments from councilors? Alright, then, I guess at this point, I'd be seeking a motion to approve $1,000 for the Calvin Presbyterian Church Grant Application for the Type 1 Infrastructure Grants and to be allocated fully from the District 5 Fund.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Brent Sampson, could I have a second here, please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Digdon. Any further discussion on that item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thank you. Alright, so the next item on the agenda is, again, a piece of correspondence from the Hearts of Al Madam, is regarding the Hearts Ability Society regarding the wreaths fundraiser. So the letter goes on to request, I believe, that the municipality consider purchasing wreaths, and they are very full and have a beautiful red bow, is what I noted from the letter, which are my favorite kind of wreaths, but would be interested to hearing from council, or maybe even over to you, Troy, maybe to kinda set the stage as to whether or not this is maybe something we've done in the past?
It is, Madam Warden, it's been done in the past, not last year, but two years ago, I believe it was CFO, that it was done.
I think it was last year.
It was last year as well, yeah, so, and I believe it was four or five wreaths, if I'm not mistaken?
I think it was two.
Oh, it was only, oh, and they were on the front door, correct, correct. They didn't do the lamp posts last year, they did the front doors last year, and they're looking to do the lamp posts this year.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, that was definitely throwing me off, because I didn't remember, I didn't remember the lamp post piece, but that, that would make sense, yeah, okay. So, do we have a sense of how many wreaths that the request is like, cause there's...
I just, I thought the conversation was gonna go to operations, so I didn't bring this up earlier, but I'm gonna remove myself, cause this is a client of mine, so if the decision will be made by council, I'll remove myself.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure, thank you, Councilor Sampson, sure thing. So do we don't, how many lamp posts are there?
I believe there's 13 lamp posts in Arashat.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Chris. And do we do this, I guess I would be considered, I would be a little concerned, sorry, I would be just a little concerned, because I believe... Just gonna ask the Deputy Warden, hang on one second, because I think we also have lamp posts in Lewesdale, under the charge of the, of the county, right? So would we be looking at both areas? That's, I guess, I guess a question for consideration, but over to you, Deputy Warden, yeah, just press your button.
So that's, that's a very good point, Madam Warden, there is lamp post in Lewesdale as well, and I don't know how many there is, but going to your number, Chris, yeah, my mom's a very superstitious woman, so I know there's 13 lamp posts. If she would've been the head of the engineering firm, she would've put 12 or 14, right? She would never, so I, that's how I know there's 13 there. But I think in the past, we were buying some, or maybe 13 of them, for a cul-de-bouvoir, and kids were decorating them, and then putting them on the lamp, and they were beautiful, like, you know, all the, all the kids in the classrooms were decorating them with different teams and stuff like that, right? But it was, it was very nice, yeah, so, I don't know if that's something we wanna entertain going back to, but I think that's, that's been done in the past, Jason, do you remember that situation, or?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Deputy Warden. Yeah, did you wanna, did you have comments to add?
Yeah, just, the, part of the, part of fill in the blanks is that the Deputy Warden and myself had purchased them from the cul-de-bouvoir school, and that was the, which were hung along the, and then two were purchased, I believe, through, through here.
Okay, great, thanks, so, I mean, this is a, this is a pretty low-cost item in the scheme of 13 lamp posts, but I guess, I wonder how many are in Lewesdale, and I think if we're decorating some, we should decorate them all, like, you know?
Yeah, the request at this time, right, though, is just Arashat, doesn't mean that the folks in Lewesdale aren't gonna send us a letter as well, but right now, it is only the 13 in Arashat.
Alright, okay, so councilors, what would you like to do with this particular request?
Personally, I think we should count the light posts within the...
Personally, I think we should count the light posts within the county of Richmond between Lewesdale, Arichat, St. Peters and if, if...
You mean just out of our operations bunch?
Yeah, or our district fund, whatever.
Right.
Because really we're only looking at...
Yeah. So it hasn't come in as a grant application, so that'd be a whole process we'd have to get them to go through, and I'm a little concerned about the timing because Christmas is coming. But, and just to clarify, the, the lamp posts in the village of St. Peters are, they're owned by the Village Commission, right? So I, I think they probably have plans for that already. But just generally then, could we just maybe refer this back to staff to make a decision on what's possible, I guess, in terms of our regular operational funds? Would folks be in favor of that? Okay. Yeah? Okay, I think we have agreement on that then, so we'll leave it there and maybe if, could someone just maybe get Counselor Melanie Sampson back in the door? And I don't think we need a motion to that effect, I think we'll just leave that in your hands, Troy, if that's okay?
Sure, back to us.
Yeah, okay. Great, thank you. The next item on the agenda is an MOU draft from Terry Smith with Destination Cape Breton. And this really is to just align the MOU with the, the new marketing levy bylaw that we have already passed. So councilors, if you've had a chance to review it, just wondering if you would be in favor of completing the alignment of the MOU with the, with the existing bylaw? And if so, I'd just get a motion to recommend that we approve the MOU among the five Cape Breton Island municipalities and DCBA. Anyone like to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
Thank you Counselor Sampson. Could I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you Deputy Warden. And any further discussion on that item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda is correspondence for information purposes, and there were a few pieces. One was regarding the Municipal Housing Needs Report. So thank you CAO for sharing that with us. It's an interesting read for those who have, haven't had a chance. There were some corrections that needed to be made in the original one, a little bit of reference to other regions, but that, that has since been corrected. I do want to note, they, they refused to make a correction on the service-based count project that forms part of the basis of the, the data collection and the data analysis in the report, that, that service-based count project was conducted in the eastern zone by the Affordable Housing Association, as noted, but also with the leadership of the, the Straight Richmond Housing Matters Coalition. And I, for some reason, they weren't interested in making that correction, but, but definitely wanted to note it here because I know several of the members of that coalition put a lot of work into that service-based count, and I want to maybe take the opportunity to thank them again for that. So the housing report is available now and I guess up to us to decide how we want to treat it. We can kind of leave it on the agenda, it is for information purposes. My feeling is we probably want to put it up on our website, share it publicly, but would kind of look for some direction from council on that.
That was certainly what my hope was when we discussed it at a recent meeting and it was still embargoed at the time. My hope was that once we did receive it, that we would make it fully public.
Thank you Counselor Sampson. Any further discussion on this? Any...
Be fascinating to see going forward, some of the updates on it, because I was just thinking, it, it was kind of just unusual timing, I think, around COVID and everything else and some of the changes we've seen. Because as far as permitting goes, it's shot way up since 2021 and, and actually probably, you know, skews a lot of these numbers. And that may be temporary as well, but it's just, it would be interesting to see the, the changes going forward as compared to what the predictions were in here.
Yeah, it's a great point. It would be nice if, if, you know, we had some consideration from the province that maybe this could be a baseline and that we kind of, we do this type of exercise every a couple of years, you know, if not every year, because I do think the landscape is changing really, really rapidly. But in the meantime, if folks are in agreement, perhaps we could publish this on our website and put some, maybe do a little social media post to let members of the public know that it's there. I think there are some developers in the region who would be very interested to see it, so. Everyone's okay with that? Okay. So I don't think we need a motion to that effect, we've got some consensus here from council.
We'll take that through.
Great. Thank you. Troy, okay. My button went off again. All right, so if there's no further discussion, I'll move it on. Okay, so I seem to be having a microphone glitch. I'll just, just keep my hand on the button. Oh, sorry!
Hang on, I've been, I've been, I've been called worse than a glitch, but, I've been called worse than a glitch, it's okay. But, no, I agree that we should have it on our website for sure and share it, but I just, I read this document and, and, you know, just wanted to share some numbers with the public this evening, I mean. So you're looking at a gap of 370... Yeah, so you're, you're looking at a gap of like 370 units as of right now, right? And they're saying by 2027, you're going to need 515 new units. Right? So that's, that's an alarming number. That's two alarming numbers, right? It's saying that public housing, public housing wise, we have earned 17 housing units. 26 of them are for families and 91 of them are for seniors. That make up the 117. So going back to our discussion about West Richmond, West Richmond and developers, not sure how many people know about the new municipal capital growth fund that our Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, John Lorr, just announced. That's like a $32 million one-time investment for population growth and housing incentives, right? So when you're talking developers in our region, yeah, we got to share this information with them. We got to share these municipal capital growth funds. We got to share our CCBF options, our SSGF options, and I think we got to get the ball rolling when it comes to getting, getting on board with, with getting these units built. You know, we're not going to see 515, but we got to get, we got to get the ball rolling in my opinion, right? So, you know, you look at groups like, you look at groups like the Antigenish Affordable Housing Society, they're nonprofit. You look at Geisbro that just transferred over some land to the Housing Trust of Nova Scotia to build public housing for healthcare professionals, right? So, yeah, I think we, we got to take these numbers into consideration and we got to, we got to move forward ASAP, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Warden. I totally agree. The numbers are alarming and, and I think the sooner we get this information out to the public, the better frankly, because I do think there's a role for private sector, there's also going to be a role for the nonprofit sector. And that's, you know, that's why I'm really glad that council in the past has supported the, the, the go-forward to develop a nonprofit housing association like the Antigenish Affordable Housing Association. We don't have one of those here. So this is what we need to get in place to make sure that those other segments of the market, affordable housing, second-stage housing, et cetera, are, are available here in this region, right? So, yeah, great. Okay, thank you, and apologies if you, if I don't see you. You can just wave. All right, so the next item on the agenda then is the Letter to Minister Lorr Regarding the Service Exchange Agreement, MOU, Bill 340. And this is just, again, provided for information purposes. It's the letter that we agreed that I would, I would send forward to the minister and wanted to make sure you all had a copy of it and that it was on the public record, that Richmond County does support Bill 340. There had been some debate about that following a, some, some news reporting that had occurred, but we got that all straightened out really quickly. And, you know, I think, I think there's obviously, you know, more work that needs to be done for some of our neighbors, you know, in CBRM, but, but certainly for Richmond County looks to be the path forward. So that's just a copy of the letter for your information. Does anybody have any questions about that item? Okay, great. So the next item on the agenda is for unfinished business, and it is regarding the, the item we had for discussion on the deer population in Richmond County. And so I believe we've gotten a response back to the message that had been sent out on that, and it came from Elizabeth Walsh with the province of Nova Scotia, I believe it's just with DNRR. And she has, you know, she's looking at potentially offering to set up a meeting with, with us as a council or perhaps with staff to better understand the concerns, because they do have, you know, you know, NRR does sometimes take an advisory role in municipal or community deer management if requested. So, you know, obviously kind of talking about data collection there too. So I'm not sure, councilors, if you would, if you would want to take any action on this item, or if there's any some next steps you'd like to recommend?
I would possibly just, if Ms. Walsh was coming down, I would recommend she drives the West Arichat Loop. She has a better chance of not striking a deer as to if she drives the Disco Shrocky Bay, because she's, anytime at this time of night, she will see anywhere between 6:00 to 20:00, driving in that area, so.
For sure. Thanks Counselor Digdon. It's, there definitely seems to be an uptick in the population. At this stage, I'm wondering if councilors would like to perhaps refer this back to staff to see if we could do an outreach to Ms. Walsh and see if she might be interested in having a deeper conversation on it? Or if there are members of council who would like to participate in that conversation, I'm sure that'd be okay. CAO, maybe over to you on that.
Madam Chair, there, there was a mention to coordinate with the MLA's office as well, so I think we'll take them up on that opportunity and see if there's a way to do something regionally with some of the other counties as well, and see what we can come up with here and help them get the information they need on the ballot program as well, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks CAO. It's all right. Okay, so, or councilors, are you okay with that, to just continue coordinating through staff? We've already got a motion in place for that, so I think we're okay. Okay, great. If there's no other discussion on that item, I'll move us on to the review of checks issued for October 2023. Are there any questions on the review of checks? Okay, hearing none, I'll move us on to the review of action items. Any questions on the action items?
Apologies on the list in the PDF, some of the cells collapsed and made it a little difficult for you to read. I do have the Excel file here in case you guys have any questions on some of the ones that are closed off in the PDF, but we'll watch for that going forward.
Now, that was a glitch, right? That was a real glitch. Okay, no, that's great, thank you Troy. And yeah, I do find the Excel sheet really helpful because you can sort it really easily, so if we could, if we could see that on the regular, that'd be great. Okay, so if, are there any other questions on the action items? All right, so items added to the agenda, I don't believe we had any. So we'll open now for 15-minute question period, and the number to call for question period, again, for folks watching at home, is 902-226-9885. This question period's not restricted to items on the agenda, it's pretty well wide open for folks, so, so again, that's 902-226-9885. Or if there are members of the gallery who would like to ask questions? Just asking, I mean. All right, we'll just give it a minute in case we have some folks wanting to call in from home. There is a slight delay, so.
It's late tonight to have to drive back to San Fex?
Okay. All right, well, it's sounding like quiet from the phone line, so we'll wrap up the question period for this evening. And certainly if members of the public have questions about this evening's discussions or municipal matters, they can reach out to us at any time as well. And I'll ask now for a motion to move us in camera for contract. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
So we are back in public session and I believe there's no further business on the agenda, so we will adjourn the meeting. So thanks everyone, and thanks for those watching at home.